Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Also at this moment, the community has suffered the loss of a few of our members and I would like to call a moment of silence during this meeting for them. Your call. Thank you. Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that digital copies of the packet are available on our website. A QR code is provided just outside the door on the top left corner or on the top left corner of the YouTube video. Open your phone's camera to scan the code and you'll be able to access the packet. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. McCulto?
Here.
Mr. Pinkush? Mr. Denmark?
Here.
Mrs. Loane?
Here.
Mrs. Borg?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Citizen comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Please note, this is not a time for dialogue. It's a time for citizens to speak and the council to listen. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in for citizen comments?
No one has signed in.
Is there anyone present in the chambers who would like to speak on an agenda item at this time? This would be a great time, sir. Yeah, please come up to the podium. Please press that button there and then state your name. Thank you.
Hi, how you guys doing? This is just a brief question as to oversight of DOT State Highway and signage and presenting an opportunity for creating a cooperation between Chamber of Commerce, local business, community, and the city council to approve signage for a diverter at the head of the bay. Also possibly for railroad tracks for previously designated historic area. And then based upon success of that, which was smaller signage, we already have half the donations necessary for the first sign. 500 of the 1,083 through either the city museum, CMS, the Anchor Inn, and then personal donations. But that would also be a larger set of signs on the old Seward or the Seward Highway, one in one direction, one on the other. But because of the mileage, it's 35 miles per hour here in town, smaller signage, out there it's 55, so it's twice the price. But based upon success here, would that be something that the city council would look at in terms of business? It's gone through Warning Light to Alaska, which does the DOT signage. And I presented that to the Assistant City Manager when she was here. Ada? I don't remember her name. Addison, yes. Sorry. Okay. So that was the business. I have small text images of what it's supposed to look like, brown and white for the sign, consistent with other historic or arts and district signage for the state.
Mayor, we do have those from the previous Assistant City Manager. The new Assistant City Manager will be working on them and will contact you.
Thank you very much. Are there more? Any more from citizens in the audience who wish to speak?
I'd just like to say it's really hard to hear you guys tonight. All the mics are real low. Thank you.
Is this better back there? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, don't forget to talk right into the microphone.
Okay. Moving forward, if there's no other citizens who would like to speak at this moment. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Is there a motion and second to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove Resolution 2025-039 from the agenda at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so Mr. Wagner, you moved to amend the agenda by removing item number eight. Is that what you mean to say?
That's what I said.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on that item? Okay, please call the roll.
Voting on the motion to amend the agenda by removing item eight. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkush? Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and the agenda is amended by removing item eight. Returning again to the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Voting on the motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as amended. Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkush?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and the agenda and consent agenda are approved as amended. On tonight's consent agenda are the approval of the October 14th, 2025 Canvas Board Meeting Minutes, the approval of the October 21st, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes, the approval of the October 27th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes, and the appointment of Benjamin Durding to Planning and Zoning Commission, Seat D.
Okay, thank you. At this time, on the agenda, does anyone wish to declare a substantial financial interest in the matter of appearing on the agenda? I guess I have a conflict I wish to declare and that would pertain to resolutions. Let's see here. That's the last two. Can I see that? Okay. Resolution 2025-043.
Mayor, if you would like to state why you believe there is a conflict and then we'll have legal weigh-in on it.
Yes, I can. So let me pull up this resolution here. Well, thank you. So under here says on September 23rd, ARRC provided a formal written counterproposal approving the sale of three parcels, AO1 Sportsman's Lounge, AO2 Harbor Parking Area and Whittier Creek Area, AOI3 Harbor Uplands, and so forth. A sportsman's lounge is owned by my father, my family. So we share the same last name, so I wish to declare a conflict there.
Holly, I can speak to it as well if you'd like.
Okay, sure. I mean, I think that you do not have a conflict of interest under the code provisions because immediate family is defined as the spouse of a person, a life partner, a person cohabitating with a person or a child, including a stepchild and an adoptive child of that person. Because your father does not qualify as any of those members of your family, barring some interest where you have, where that interest has been imputed to you, like you have that financial interest and that financial interest is a substantial one, there is not a conflict of interest under the language of the code. And there is not, I'm sorry, there is not a substantial financial interest under the language of the code. That said, it's ultimately council's decision.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so at this time, because you've declared a potential conflict of interests, the council would need to vote on the question, does Mr. Shen have a substantial financial conflict of interest in item 12, Resolution 2025-043? If you were to vote yes, then that would mean, yes, Mr. Shen does have a substantial financial conflict of interest. And if you voted no, that would mean that he does not have a substantial financial conflict of interest. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Loane?
No.
Mr. Pinkush? Mr. McCulto?
No.
Mr. Denmark?
No.
Mr. Wagner?
No.
Mrs. Borg?
No.
And Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The council has decided that Mr. Shen does not have a substantial financial conflict of interest in item number 12.
Okay. Any other conflicts to declare? Okay, let's move to presentations and reports. First presentation we have is Alaska's Best Tasting Water Award.
Thank you, everybody. To the city manager, the council, and the mayor, and the community as a whole, the Water Department has won Best Tasting Water for more than 10 times through years of hard work and dedication. It is with great pleasure that we can present this award to all the citizens of Whittier. Thank you and congratulations.
While everybody is sitting down, I did talk to Cam today and we are looking at possibly making smaller versions of that so businesses can put it in their buildings to show that we have the best water in Alaska. So we're going to work on that for this coming season.
Thank you, Cam. We have some more presentations coming up here. We have the Gold Certified Alaska Clean Harbor Award.
Good evening, everybody, council and people in the crowd. So I just attended the Alaska Association of Harbor Masters and Port Administrators and Kyle's been working on this project for a little over a year. Council by resolution supported this initiative and so we were awarded the gold level, not quite the palladium, but got a couple of things extra to do for gold. But we did, we got this for 2025 and it's good through 2028. So I wanted Kyle up here because he was the one that really did a majority of the work and the paperwork and I appreciate it, man. Thank you very much. There's only five other harbors in Alaska that have this, so we're one of them.
Nice job, you guys. And our next presentation we have is a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy and that's will be Kristin Smith of the Prince William Sound Economic Development District.
Hey, folks, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thanks, Shelby. Thank you, Mayor Shen and council members in Whittier. And clearly Cordova is going to have to step up its game. You guys are setting the bar pretty high between your water and your harbor. I'm impressed. But I wanted to just take a few minutes and talk about our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It's a five-year plan for economic development in Prince William Sound that the Economic Development District is required to put together every five years to guide economic development in the sound and also in the sound's individual communities. You know, each community, the Prince William Sound Economic Development District, I think most of you know this, but we represent Tunega, Titlic, Whittier, Valdez, and Cordova. And so we're always trying to be responsive to the economic development needs across the sound with things like ferry service and marine transportation infrastructure and things that we can do to, what we can do as a whole to keep our energy costs low and tourism. But I know that each individual community has its own priorities and so we want to be responsive to that as well. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew this process is going on. We just opened up a survey and we're hoping to get about 100 responses. And I think that you each have the flyer in your packet, which has a QR code on it, so that's a link to the survey. And I will also send an email to the clerk that she can distribute to the whole council with an online link. You can go to the survey if you want to do it on a computer instead of your phone. But this survey is going to help us gather information from all across the sound and it's part of the four elements that we're required to have in our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And those four elements are a demographic overview, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, a section on goals and strategies, you know, how are we going to achieve the goals and the economic development priorities that we map out, and then an evaluation framework. So that's a way of keeping us accountable. We say, here are our goals, how are we going to get there? And then at the end of those five years, did we get there? So that's the process in a nutshell. And we have, the survey is now open. It'll be open for another three weeks, I think. And then we're also going to have a series of small group meetings. We had one last week at our annual meeting on We had one last week at our annual meeting on infrastructure, transportation, and energy. There'll be another one on fisheries and seafood processing, one on energy, I'm sorry, not energy, one on tourism and outdoor recreation, and one on housing. So I will include that information with the clerk also in case anybody in town would like to join us for those groups. We, they're open to the public. We're always welcoming people's perspectives. And we hope to have our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy completed by the end of January. So you'll be hearing from us again as we advertise about the survey, advertise about our small groups, and then we'll have drafts available for public comment as we go through the process of putting together goals and strategies. Yeah. So I think that's it. I'm sure you all have heard of this process before. It's similar to how each community puts together their comprehensive plan, but like I said, we're doing it for the whole sound and including the communities. And I guess I would also add, it's really great to have input from each community so that we can, we can include your priorities also in our plan. And that way you can use that plan to take to funders to say, look, this was a region-wide effort that was done to assess economic priorities, and this document includes the DeLong Doc, or it includes wayfinding signs for the city of Whittier to benefit the visitor economy, or it includes the municipal park, or whatever you, you know, you want your priorities to be included in there so that you can also use that to make your case to funders. So, yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions. All right. Well, thank you for your time, and I will be following up with the clerk, and you'll hear from me again by email.
Thank you so much for your presentation and brought forth the survey for us to participate in.
Great, thanks, everyone.
Okay. Mayor's report. I have no official report. However, I would like to put a spotlight on some entities in our community. For, one is the Whittier Community School. A couple of weeks ago, the school put on a fundraiser to raise funds to donate to the Western Alaska Disaster Relief. And it was mostly the, I believe, the high school class. And those guys raised over, I believe, $700 to send out to those folks. And I want to put a spotlight on that. I think that's pretty cool. Vice Mayor, do you have a report you would like to give?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wild?
I do have a couple of things to report. First, my manager's monthly wild recognition was, two of our nominees for tonight was Public Works earning the first place for the Rural Water Association. I'm really proud of you guys. Their commitment to quality shows up in every tap, and this award reaffirms the skill and pride that they bring to serving our residents. So again, good job to everybody in Public Works. The Whittier Harbor achieved its Gold Certified Clean Harbor status, an accomplishment that speaks their dedication, their professionalism, and their care for our marine environment. So thank you. Good job to the harbor. Both accomplishments represent excellence to the benefits to the entire community, and I'm proud of these teams to the, of what they do every day, and the town should feel equally as proud of what they achieved. As they beat each other up in the front row. They're so proud of each other. I am, the administration is pleased to share that our recruitment for an assistant city manager has resulted in a highly qualified internal applicant who may, who met the full needs of the role, and that is Shelby Carlson. As demonstrated his strong capacity, capability, and steady judgment, and a clear commitment to Whittier's operations and future, we are proud to offer her the position of Assistant City Manager. She will also serve as Acting City Clerk until that vacancy is filled. Her knowledge of our organization and her readiness to step into the expanded responsibilities will provide valuable continuing and support for the entire team. So I just welcome Shelby into that position. I did attend the ICMA, and I'm not going to read these. There are six of the classes that I did attend. I plan on my next CMR putting some more of the classes. I did a little bit differently this time. I have taken what I learned in the class, what, how it could affect or be used within Whittier. But I just want to give some of the titles. Partners in Local Government, which is City Manager and Council Alignment; Leadership at Every Level: Empowering Women in Government; Cultivating Civility, Respect, and Fair Treatment; Involving Nature of Public Comment. The nature of the public comment was an amazing class, and it just shows how, since COVID happened, how it's evolved. So I'm hoping that we can introduce some of those. The Purpose of Positivity and Leadership Retention. And the final one is Green Spaces and Public Spaces: The Natural Asset of Strategic Infrastructure. So those are, if you have any questions about those or anything that's in our packet, feel free to reach out to me, and I can help answer them.
Is there any questions for the city manager report from the council? Any specific questions? Okay, next report would be from the city attorney. Holly, do you have a, a report you would like to give?
No, Mayor, there's a written report in the packet to the extent anybody has any questions for me, and I'm available.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to new business. We have ordinance for introduction. We have ordinance 2025-004, adopting a new chapter, 13-12-025 of the Whittier Municipal Code entitled Water and Sewer Utility Service Deposit. Is there a motion of second to introduce ordinance 2025-004 and set a public hearing for the December 16th, 2025 regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Staff report?
Chris, will you go ahead and give that, please?
Chris, sorry, you're breaking up. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I got you, Chris.
Okay, yeah, I was having a hard time hearing also, so I'm not sure if it was just me, but can you hear me now?
You sure can.
Okay, sorry about that. This, this ordinance proposes to establish a customer deposit for water and sewer utility accounts. And the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the utility against unpaid customer bills and ensure the financial well-being and the health of the utility. It's common practice for utilities to require customers to pay a deposit when they establish water and sewer service, although Whittier has not had that requirement in the past. Specifically, this ordinance proposes a deposit that's equal to two months' average site usage for residential and commercial customers, except for customers that will be required to provide special deposits, and those are defined in the ordinance as large-volume customers who exceed either 20,000 gallons of water per month usage during their operational season, or they account for more than 10% of the utility's total monthly revenue. For those special deposit customers, alternatively, they can select to post a payment bond in lieu of, of posting a three-month average site usage. There are, one provision of this ordinance that will be, require us to change the tariff, and that specifically will be the interest rate that council wishes to set on the deposit. That could have been defined in the ordinance, but, but I think our proposal is that we would define that in the tariff in case it needs to change in the future. That would be easier to make those changes. And the intent in that tariff that has not yet come forward, but will if council passes this ordinance, would be to, you know, specifically define a little bit more about interest, how interest is earned, when it will be refunded, and so on. But this ordinance specifically says customers will earn interest on the deposit. The interest will be refunded when customers terminate service or when, when they've had 24 months of timely payments. And if the, if the customer is, you know, has late payments within the last 24 months, then we won't refund their deposit until they've established that payment history, and then they'll be refunded. The ordinance does not propose to retroactively apply this change, so the change would only apply in the case where you have new service customers, or if you have customers whose accounts meet certain criteria, one of which would be if they're in the special customer high-volume class, then they would be required to post their utility deposit. So I'm happy to ask, answer any questions if I missed anything. So hopefully I caught it all. Thanks.
Mr. Denmark?
Yeah, a question, Chris, for your, can you note who your high-volume users are? To whom this would impact?
Yeah, council member Denmark, you're the mayor. I didn't do that exercise, to be honest with you. I do know that it would depend on, for example, if we had the seafood operator in operations, they certainly would qualify as, as their usage during the season would exceed the 20,000 gallon per month mark, as well as exceed the 10% of our revenues. And Scott may, may have an idea if there are other customers that would qualify, but I didn't actually do that exercise.
Well, my follow-up question is going to, was going to be, have we had a problem that would stem this action? And the entity that you just mentioned answered my question, so I get it. Thank you.
And in response to that, you know, the challenge is to treat everybody equitably. So we can't just target one specific business and, you know, impose requirements on them that aren't consistent.
I was very surprised to hear that we might have had a bad debt problem, but I do recall a recent issue.
Other questions from council? Anyone online? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Voting on the motion to introduce ordinance 2025-004, an ordinance adopting a new chapter, 13.12.025 of the Whittier Municipal Code entitled Water and Sewer Utility Service Deposit, and set a public hearing for the December 16th, 2025 regular meeting. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. Maculto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and ordinance 2025-004 is introduced and set for a public hearing at the December 16th meeting.
Thank you. Next item we have on our agenda is non-code ordinance 2025-005, repealing the discounted winter mortgage, transient mortgage rate, and adding a 40% discount rate for the transient mortgage paid in full and non-refundable for a 12-month period. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mayor? Can you hear me? Victor?
Yes.
Okay, it wasn't expressed, but I, I would like to second it, but if possible, open for public hearing, schedule for public hearing at the January regular scheduled meeting versus December.
If Mr. Wagner is amenable to that amendment?
That's fine.
Then yes. So the motion is then to introduce non-code ordinance 2025-005 and set for a public hearing at the January 2026 regular meeting. I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Okay, let's open this for discussion here. We have a staff report we can, we can start with. Where should we open it?
This, this resolution was written by both Mr. Pincush and Denmark, so they would give the staff report.
Okay. Mr. Denmark, Mr. Pincush?
I did not have, write this ordinance, but I did co-sponsor it with Counselor Pincush.
Okay. Mr. Pincush?
Can you, can you guys hear, hear me? I, I get an echo when I talk. I'll make, I'll make it brief. When long ago it was identified that our annual transient option was not in some federal regulations, so we eliminated it, and that created a cost difference that is, that is, to me, except that is, to me, excessive. And I don't have it in front of me, but to give you an example, if you were to take a, and the intent of this is to provide a halfway in between something that's more power to boat owners for long-term voting, but if you look at our Seward and Homer, look at our monthly rates, you know, we're probably 20 or 30% higher monthly rates, but when you break it out to six-month rates or 12-month rates, it becomes well over 100%, I think even, it might even exceed 200% compared to Seward. So we're completely uncompetitive with them, and so when a boat is sold, those people are going to move those boats, we're going to lose that boat in the harbor, it's going to go someplace else, it's just too expensive. And the other thing, and it is going to cost the short term potentially, because boats that are paying those prices will have, will be reduced. One of the reasons I wanted to go to January is there's information provided by the Harbor Master that maybe there's a simpler way to accomplish the same goal here, rather than create it in a new category. Honestly, I don't understand it, the difference in it, but that's what I want to do, is find out. But it's fairly simple. You know, we did do the 15% rate and tried that, and it sunsetted it, but this is kind of a, to make things more competitive, and it's by request of boat owners, it didn't just come out of the blue. But we are, you know, the harbor is near completion, and thank you, everybody, for that, the harbor staff for making that happen. But one of the reasons that we implemented strict restrictions in the harbor, particularly annually transient, was we were trying to cut down the number of boats. When we did do the rebuild, it would be easier because we'd have less boats. Well, now we have, are going to have a brand-new harbor, and I think we should restore some of the, some of the way it was before, more boats in the harbor in the 80s than there is today. And, you know, all those boats that stay year-round, we get sales tax from, you got businesses working on them, you got Boat Watch, and there's a lot of money comes to a boat that stays year-round, so this is the kind of help that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pincush. Any comments and questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wagner?
I believe we need to have a work session on this.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I attended the Ports and Harbor Commission meeting last week, yeah, last week, and there was quite a lengthy discussion in that meeting, and I do feel that it would be important to loop, not loop, but involve them in this process concerning our annual transient mortgage. There are a lot of invested individuals on that board, so I would, I'm there with Mr. Wagner.
I would like to add that.
Go ahead, Mr. Pincush.
Okay, yep. I started this process in April, and number one about annual transient, it's an alternative to it, but I started this process in April, and I spoke with our legal counsel, and I was, it was, I was told that we should not go back to ports and harbors, because ports and harbors presented us with the elimination of annual transient, and this, and so that basically the ball is in our court, as in the council, and we shouldn't send it backward. That's what I was told back in, I believe, in April by legal, not those exact words, but that's just what I was told.
Okay, thank you. I want to call on Holly, but I know Ms. Loon, looked like you had something to say, and I wanted to call on you before.
Thank you.
I would jump in a little bit, but I want to give you guys a chance to speak.
No, thank you. I was just going to say that I agree with you and Tom. I think, especially reading some of the policy and equity concerns and the recommendation from the Harbor Master, I think it would, it would be a wise decision to have at least a discussion.
Is that it? Yep, thank you, Ms. Loon. Okay, thank you, Holly, or Mr.?
Yes, so I'm not sure what that legal guidance was, because I will say, and that does, I mean, honestly, I'm just not sure what context that was in or the scope, but I will say that it is completely appropriate if you want to do, say, a joint work session, and you want to have that discussion, I would postpone the ordinance to a time certain if you don't want to kill it, or you can postpone it indefinitely, knowing that the option is there to bring it back. I'm not sure how, I'm sure your clerk and assistant city manager can walk you through that, but what I would say is, it is important to have legal representation at that joint work session while you won't be making any decisions. One of the things that Councilmember Pincush is talking, is referencing, and it's an important matter, all regulations involving your harbor and the property rights and the interests associated with mortgage and vessels have implications under constitutional provisions, both under the federal law and under the state, and so we always want to make sure that we are, we are running those through legal counsel. That is something your harbor is very good at and always does, and your Port and Harbor Commission as well, but I just, that's, I want to make sure we do that if you do go for a joint work session.
Thank you, Holly. Any other questions, comments from council? Ms. Wild?
If the legal recommendation is to table this, I would, as a second of the motion, I'm willing to do that.
Likewise, yeah.
Just to clarify, that would be a new motion, because that's very different from the original motion, so you are more than welcome to?
I'll make the motion then to postpone this. Do I got to?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, I will postpone it indefinitely.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Voting on the motion to postpone non-code ordinance 2025-005 indefinitely. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mrs. Loon?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and non-code ordinance 2025-005 is indefinitely postponed.
Okay, moving on. I believe we're moving into resolutions. Resolution 2025-040, a resolution supporting full funding of $18,186,535 for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the fiscal year 2027 state capital budget. Is there a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-040?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I think it was your staff report.
This is one of those that I should have told one of you to go ahead and put on consent, because it's the same thing we do every year, this one and the next one, we do it every year so that we support those grants, and as you saw tonight, they're good in every way possible to support.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2025-040, a resolution supporting full funding $18,186,535 for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the FY 2027 state capital budget. Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mrs. Loon?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution 2025-040 is approved.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-041, a resolution supporting raising the maximum available Alaska Department of Transportation Harbor Facility Grant to $7,500 for the eligible projects on an annual basis. Is there a second and a motion to approve Resolution 2025-041?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Is there a staff report?
Same as the first.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Any questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2025-041, a resolution supporting raising the maximum available Alaska Department of Transportation Harbor Facility Grant to $7,500,000 for eligible projects on an annual basis. Mrs. Loon?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark? Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution 2025-041 is approved.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-042, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Whittier and Alaska Railroad Corporation regarding land purchases, sales, exchange, or combination thereof of fair market value and management within the City of Whittier. Is there a motion and second to approve Resolution 2025-042?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, this, as all, everyone knows, in December of 2024, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Alaska Railroad effective to November 20 of 2024. This is giving us an extension on that. We have made some leeway and would like to keep making that leeway, and keeping us in form with this First Amendment would give us a MOU through December 31 of 2026, which would put us through this next session that we are trying for.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Questions? Mr. Denmark?
Yeah, this and the following resolution regarding the land issues, and we also have the same topic in executive session at the end of the meeting, and I'm wondering if that which is discussed in executive session might have an impact on perspective on these two resolutions.
After the second resolution, I was going to suggest that if the council wanted to have the executive session, we could, but that we did not see immediate need for it unless you did. So if you feel that you need an executive session, we can postpone both of these until that.
Well, I was asking a question, but yes, that is my concern. I mean, is there, I know you have, the railroad land purchase discussion and executive session, are they at all relevant to these two resolutions?
Vice Mayor through the mayor, as noted, we've already had an executive session discussing this next resolution and this resolution, and that was us, our directive was to bring something forward to this meeting. We keep a placeholder for the railroad right now, and it's just been kept on the bottom of the resolution, bottom of your agenda. We do not, we do not need an executive session this evening. These are things that you've discussed in executive session, unless you, as council members, want one.
Mr. Denmark, did I answer your question there?
Yes, I did.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion or questions on the subject matter? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2025-042, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Whittier and the Alaska Railroad Corporation regarding land purchase or sale, exchange, or combination thereof at fair market value and management within the City of Whittier. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
No.
Mrs. Loon?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, six to one, and Resolution 2025-042 is approved.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-043, a resolution accepting the Alaska Railroad Corporation's revised land purchase proposal for areas of interest, ARRC, AOI-1, AOI-2, and AOI-3, and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the purchase process consistent with the terms provided by the Alaska Railroad Corporation in the total estimated amount of $4,893,321 in appropriating funds. Is there a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-043?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. The City of Whittier has been working with the Alaska Railroad, as you guys know, for a little over a year and a half, if longer. We've been trying for multiple years to gain our land back. These discussions dated back several years and have focused on balancing municipality, municipal development needs with the railroad's operational requirements. In July of 2025, the city submitted a revised land acquisition proposal seeking to secure key parcels essential for harbor redevelopment, community access, and public infrastructure. On September 23, 2025, the railroad provided a formal written counterproposal approving the sale of three parcels, AOI-1, which is the Sportsman's Lounge, AOI-2, which is the parking, harbor parking area, Whittier Creek, and Wellsite, and AOI-3, which is the harbor uplands at fair market value based on appraisals that were prepared by Smith, Black, Bernard, and Carson in November. The estimated total of the proposed acquisition is approximately $4.89 million, subject to the final survey adjustments. This transaction must be completed no later than January 31 of 2027 unless extended in writing. The sale is structured as a direct purchase with no land exchange requirement. The administration has reviewed the proposal with our contractor and has determined it's feasibly responsible and consistent with Whittier's strategic goals for the harbor revitalization, infrastructure, and infrastructure investment, and community growth. Acceptance of the ARC offer represents an important milestone in strengthening the city's ownership of critical waterfront properties and improving long-term coordination between the city and the railroad.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Mr. Wagner?
To, uh, Councilwoman Denmark's point, isn't this something that should be discussed after the executive session?
You've already had an executive session on this, sir.
Right. But we're having another one.
So the executive session portion on the agenda is a placeholder. If you guys choose to have another one, you tell us that tonight. If you choose to postpone this and discuss it afterwards, we can do that, too. But these were things that were requested to be brought forward at this meeting. If you need to discuss other things besides these two things that are already on public record in executive session, we can do that, too. But there is nothing new that's changed.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Ms. Wild, is one-
You answered my question. There's nothing new.
So are we still having an executive session for later?
Oh, hold on a second. Renner was speaking. Just go ahead, Renner.
I mean, on other agenda, are we still having an executive session for later?
Um, normally when we get to the executive session portion, I would say I recommend we don't have an executive session on this, or we do on this. And my recommendation for the railroad portion and our contractor's recommendation is not to have an executive session regarding the railroad this evening.
Can I answer your question? Okay. Mr. Pincush?
Yep, I would like, if we can, get a explanation of how this is going to be paid for. And specifically, I want to make sure that the leaseholders that, that currently have that land are not going to be, um, forced to pay the cost of that, of this, uh...
Yes, please.
So-
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chris. No, go ahead, Chris.
Are you able to hear me?
We are.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the question of the source of money to pay, uh, for this transaction is one that we haven't really, um, we've discussed with council, but not specifically, uh, developed a plan. One reason for that is we're just waiting until, um, some of our new fees kick in, January 1st, so we have more certainty around our revenue sources, uh, before we actually make a definitive plan. So what I would like to do is ask council for their forbearance to wait until we have more certainty around that issue. And then we will, uh, probably request an executive session to talk counsel about the options and decide which options you would like to pursue.
So a little bit of help. This resolution tonight is just authorizing us to move forward with something that would be, um, need to be done by January 31st of 2027. We still have to go through the legislative process. We still have to go to Juno. All of those things, these all line up. And, um, you know, I've spoke in length with our finance director, and our thought was that in January, we would have that type of executive session with you on, on the cost, on how we would pay for it. But we still need to, um, those breakdowns would need to be done in executive session. But we did not plan on doing that tonight. We just, this is just one of the processes moving forward to the legislative level.
Mayor? One thing that might add some, some comfort for council is they can amend, make a motion to amend Section 1 of the resolution to state at the end of the sentence, it says, "with the ARC conditions," are the last words. You can amend that to say, "with the ARC's conditions" and "subject to appropriation by council." Um, and then your Section 2 talks about the agreement being subject to approval by council, and the city manager has whereas clauses that also confirm that it's subject to appropriation. That way, you are comfortable that you're not making a decision regarding the city's finances without first knowing where those finances are going to stem from.
So just to be clear, so we are not signing on to-
So just to follow that is a motion to amend the resolution to add the word "and subject to appropriation by council" to the end of Section 1 on line 45? Okay.
Second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Any comments for clarity? Okay. No, no further discussion on that. Let's, um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Voting on the motion to amend Resolution 2025-043, line 45, to insert "and subject to appropriation by council." Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Are we voting on the resolution or the amendment?
No, this is the amendment.
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Uh, and Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and Resolution 2025-043 is amended, returning again to Resolution 2025-043 as amended.
I have a question on, you know, as we move forward with this process, I guess a, a thought is, you know, we've worked long and hard on this and, you know, we really wanted to get it right the first time. And I think a concern maybe that I have, and I imagine other counselors might have as well, is, like, moving forward on this process, does it preclude us from future land acquisitions, land acquisitions?
Our, our bills that are forward still have all those lands in them. Um, and specifically, written in the memorandum of agreement and the wherlasses were for the ability of us knowing at this time they wanted to not sell anything at the head of the bay, so we'll enter into permits for those unless the legislature, you know, does something amazing and says, "No, you will give all the land back." But, you know, we can always hope for that. But in the meantime, we've protected it by making sure that we would still be offered first right of refusals if it was to be sold and, um, that we would be able to operate with permits.
Okay, thank you. And then those lands on the head of the bay, and I believe, I guess, those are the lands that, were removed under the revised kind of, no, okay. So... What is the... Any questions? Okay, hearing done. Madam Clerk, please, will you please call the roll?
Voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2025-043, a resolution accepting the Alaska Railroad Corporation's revised land purchase proposal for areas of interest, ARRC, AOI-1, AOI-2, and AOI-3, and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the purchase process consistent with the terms provided by the Alaska Railroad Corporation in the total estimated amount of $4,893,321 in appropriating funds as amended. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
No.
Mr. Bor-, uh, Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes six to one, and Resolution 2025-043 is approved as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Other new business item, we're on item 17. And we, we are doing appointments of council members to council committees.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So included in your packet is a summary of the various council committees that have been established that I could remember and find, um, throughout the past years. And because of the election and just turnover in general, there are vacancies on several of the committees. So administration wanted to bring this forward to council so that you could appoint members to sit on these committees if you wish to continue them.
Yes, let's, um, move forward. How do we, you want to go down the list?
Yes, please. So Parks and Recreation Committee already has Mr. Shen and Mrs. Loane with, uh, three additional community members, more or less, on the committee. Historical Preservation Committee was not brought forward in a resolution form, but it was requested by council, um, or a council member in 2023. So this is one that we, we look to you to see, is this something you'd like to establish? And if so, we can bring forward a resolution to establish the committee.
Are you looking for a, a council member to sit on this committee along with, uh, other community members?
I'm sure. Yeah.
I guess I'll ask, are there interested council members? Who would like to sit on the Historical Preservation Committee?
I'd be willing to.
There's, there's, there's other committees, too.
I'll sign up for that.
Also, uh, Ms. Loane, I just want to point out, how many committees and commissions, uh, do you currently sit on right now?
A lot. We'll sell them.
Okay. Perhaps we can garner other interest here to, um, share the load.
I'll also have one administrative staff on that historical committee, and that will be the city manager.
So then my other question is, do you have a number of the, the constitution of the other members of the committee? Three members of the public, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Sorry, it's my first time making committees here.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on that one. Uh, the next one is the Council Policy and Procedures Manual Committee. This one was established by resolution in 2023. Um, this one, we do have another agenda item to discuss, the council manual. But, um, there were two members on the committee who are no longer with us. So, uh, if you would like to continue with this committee, we would just like to know who you would like to appoint to the committee.
We have interested parties for the Council Policy and Procedures Manual Committee.
You also don't have to continue with it. Okay.
I don't think anyone's interested.
Yeah, we should have skilled it.
We can always, uh, start that one up if we have to, correct?
Okay, yep, that sounds, that sounds great. The next one is the City Lands Advisory Committee. Uh, we will be bringing forward a, an ordinance to you at the next meeting as this committee, um, technically expires, December 31st of this year. But this one can po-, is composed of the mayor, four residents, one subject matter expert, and two council members. So that would be three council members total that sit on that committee. Uh, it's more than three.
All right, now, currently, it's, um, members are, uh, mayor, I didn't sign up for this. Okay, is it, um, does it have to be the mayor?
You are welcome to amend the ordinance when we bring it forward at next, at the next meeting.
Four city residents and one subject matter expert and two council members. Holy smokes.
Put your names in a hat.
All right, so, yeah, I'd like to, um- Yeah, but can we, can we amend this? Oh, we have two councilmen. Oh, my goodness.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, hon, thank you.
One thing to note with the Lands Advisory Committee, it is subject to the Open Meetings Act because we have expanded and created, uh, a committee with other members of the public, and we have so, it's a really good point. I mean, even without bumping up, and, and the clerk is correct, the, a number of council members is not the reason. It's Title 29's language regarding committees, um, and the composition of that particular one, which is not bad. I think council knew that when that was created by ordinance, so... If that just makes it all the more appealing to you.
You know, we have challenges, like, just filling all our seats. Is there any way we can pare it down? This committee, what do you recommend?
You can remove yourself and have two council members.
Yeah.
And we can put everybody's name in a hat. And those two council members can, uh, so Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, let's, let's pare it down. Uh, we have four city residents on there. One subject matter expert, that would be you, I imagine, Ms. Wild, or?
No, it's the, in the ordinance, it describes maybe an appraiser or realtor or somebody with the, that sort of experience.
Okay, and two council members. Let's pare it down to, uh, three resi-, city residents, one subject matter expert, and two council members.
If you have a couple council members, you know, um, and say, a couple staff members working on something, on a project, that wouldn't constitute a quote-unquote committee, and so you would not necessarily be subject to the Open Meetings Act. This is, this is different. This is a, you know, legit committee. To, to keep it very legal.
And I just really want to help the attorney know that we normally put all of our committees out there so that they're in this room and anybody can be invited to come.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Well, um, Mr. Wagner, Mr. McCulto? All right. All the cool kids are doing it.
Thank you, Mr. McCulto.
Thank you.
Uh, and then the final one is the Whittier Moves and Safe Streets for All Technical Advisory Committee. Um, this was not established by us. This was established by the contractor doing the two plans that I just described. But on here, we have one council member, uh, representing the council for this committee.
Okay, so this-
Which it was the mayor previously. This is for, okay, so Whittier Moves is the master transportation plan that, that, uh, the Alaska Department of Transportation is putting together via contractor for Whittier, for our area. They have city staff on it- They have city staff on it, on this technical advisory committee, as well as a council member.
What's timeline on that project right now?
I believe it's completion of the end of 2026. I can say that they've asked for council representation. It's not that they're, I mean, we have three, if not four, or five administrations that attend it, attend those meetings. So they're normally during the day. So we can respond and then give back a report, just like we do on our CMRs. I wouldn't say that you would have to do it. I mean, Peter, you were on it at the very beginning at one point, Blair was on it, Dickerson was on it. It's just a bunch of Zoom meetings and follow-ups and tasks. And I don't think that you want your, you want any more tasks.
Okay. How do you guys feel about just letting this one, sunsetting this one here? Okay, yeah, of course, however, if you have council members or commissioners or community members, are they welcome to participate?
There is lots of opportunity for public engagement, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
And that is all that we have for the council committees, unless you have inspiration to establish another one.
Okay, let's go, next item, we have council manual work session.
I'll speak to this one, too, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. Okay, so by resolution, there was a committee established with the goal of creating a council policy and procedures manual. Much work was put into it, it was paused as one of the committee members wanted time to speak with legal counsel regarding his concerns about what was in the manual. I'm not, I'm not sure what happened there, but no work has been done, to my knowledge, on the manual since we discussed it this time last year. So we, since it's been a year, we would like to revive it and hopefully bring it to completion soon. Because administration does feel that there is value in having this manual. So it does outline a lot of unknowns, implied maybe, rules and procedures that we would just like to have written, it would be helpful for all involved. So I, we are proposing that we have a work session prior to the regular meeting on December 16th. And we just wanted to see if there was any objection to doing so. My thought is, we would have that work session, we wouldn't bring the council manual for approval at the December meeting, we would take your feedback, incorporate it into the draft, and then bring it forward, maybe at the January meeting instead.
Would we be able to call in because I will be out of state?
Yes. Seeing no objection, we will schedule that. Work session on December 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item, new business, we have the evaluation of our city attorney.
Your tally team consisted of Mrs. Borg, Mr. Macalto, and Mr. Pincush. And I'm not sure if maybe one of you three would like to speak to the results of the city attorney evaluation?
Yeah, Mr.?
I can't if no one's volunteering. I don't, I don't have it, I don't have it in front of me, I wrote the summary. So this is off the top of my head, but what I recall from it basically was mostly job well done. And comments on, were, there were no really negative comments, it was all positive. There might have been some critique, but there was nothing negative. But I think the highlight of it was that we've had different subjects come up. And the attorneys that came to represent those different subjects offered us exceptional clarity, that, which is exactly what we asked for in the last review, was more yeses and nos and less maybes. And I think, I think they performed very well in that, in that subject matter. So I think it was, there were some mostly high ratings. Some of the ratings that weren't quite as high were from the new councillor members that don't have any, they don't have knowledge to give you an outstanding reference of what, but no, I thought it was very positive. And that's probably, that's all I can remember about it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pincush. Are there any other questions or comments? Why do we go from here? Good job, thank you, Ms. Wells.
Thank you, and I do want to assure council, we've read the comments and we see the areas for improvement. We will continue to work towards yeses and nos and as much sort of black and white responses, as many black and white responses as we can. And we will apologize profusely when we have to tell you all about the gray.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next item, we have council comments. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I've got a couple things. First, these placeholders on executive session. Is it possible we could put if or as needed at the end of them, so we know that they're placeholders? No?
Yes, yes, sir, we can.
So, and the other thing. There's been a lot of talk recently about the ground, the ground transportation fee. And I'm not sure how to word this, but I think this needs to be on our December 16th agenda to revisit this. And it may have to be an executive session, I don't know.
Would you rather have a work session on it?
Yeah, that would be fine.
I will have this, if the council's okay, I'll have the city clerk, acting city clerk, send out a poll for what date works for an executive, or a work session on it, so that we can make sure that our finance director is also in attendance.
Thank you.
Any explanation, Tom, of why this needs to be revisited at this time?
I honestly don't know how much I can talk about right now. I'll have to talk with Holly before I say anything.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Other council comments?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Borg?
Mayor Shen, council members, and residents of Whittier, and Councilmember Pincush. I want to take a moment tonight to address something that frankly never should have needed addressing. A public post made by a sitting council member directly attacking my integrity. The post was not a difference of opinion, it was a deliberate misuse of position and public influence to disparage a private citizen from serving her community. This is unethical and appropriate and wholly inconsistent with the responsibilities of an elected official. Let me be absolutely clear, I will not tolerate being disrespected, misrepresented, or personally attacked by anyone in this council chamber or outside of it. Leadership demands accountability, professionalism, not gossip, innuendo, or intimidation. The suggestion of my husband's employment with the city compromised, or city compromises my judgment or honesty is completely false. I've always operated with transparency, integrity, and will continue to uphold the same ethical standards required of every council member here. If and when a legitimate conflict of interest arises, I will follow the law and recuse myself exactly as the city code and state ethics statutes require. What concerns me far more than this personal attack is the message it sends to others in our community. When a sitting council member uses their platform to single out residents or discourage percept, percept, participation, it damages public trust, it sends a signal that only certain people are welcome to lead. This is not the kind of city I believe in, and it is not the kind of leadership this Whittier deserves. I was elected by the people of Whittier to serve the community honorably. I am not here to play politics, entertain grudges, or be silenced by intimidation. I am here to work, ask the hard questions, and represent every resident in this community with fairness and respect. I will continue to expect and demonstrate ethical conduct, professionalism, and civility from this council and will not hesitate to call out behavior that falls short of that standard. So I guess, at the end of the day, so Mr. Councilmember Pincush, I want to address you directly. I'm asking you sincerely, can we put this behind us? Can we move forward, set aside whatever this is, work together to govern this city responsibly? Our residents deserve a council focused on progress, not pettiness. They deserve collaboration, not conflict. I'm willing to turn the page if you are, but that choice has to be mutual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borg. Ms. Lone?
Thank you. I would like to add on to that. Well said, Lori, thank you, myself and my spouse were also mentioned. Really, I have nothing much more to say except that we're also supposed to be on the same team. And I, I believe that we should be. And we, this is our community and we need to stand together and we should not be taking to social media to disparage one another. It's about Whittier, and I especially also don't want this to discourage other people, other community members, from wanting to get involved and serving. We shouldn't, people should not be afraid to do that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lone. Any additional comments from council? Well, I have a few things I would like, or a couple things I'd like to bring up. I was reading the staff report, and I just want to commend our fire department for going above and beyond. I know there was news in the media regarding SNAP benefits expiring. I'm actually not up to date with current events right now, but they proactively went ahead and worked to help those in need in our community. So I'd like to give our fire and EMS a shout out there, thank you very much. Another thing I'd like to bring is back, back to the mayor's report, was I gave a shout out to the Whittier Community School for fundraising and to help those in need in other parts of Alaska. And I would, I like to bring up the idea of, you know, our city government, community as a whole, in, I guess, not really reciprocating, but matching their efforts. I think it would, I guess I would like to support, I feel that it's important to support the efforts of our youth in this community and show them that what they're doing is not, it's not childish, it's important, and it's impactful. And I would like to show them that, that we support them, we stand with them. And that would, in the form of like, yeah, making a monetary match to their efforts. I know we have a community support fund, although this would not directly go to, you know, benefit our local residents, it does, you know, potentially could benefit communities and residents in our, in our state that we share.
Mayor, are you asking for a motion to see if the council will match the $700?
Yes, Ms. Wild.
I'll make the motion.
I'd second.
And as a staff report, finance says that you do have the money to be able to match that, if the council wanted to know that.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Is there any discussion, yes?
From which fund? Community support, did I hear? Which is typically used for?
Community support within our community.
People who are in need of food assistance?
Mr. Denmark, this goes back to Whittier High Schoolers class, they fundraised, to raise funds to send relief-
For the Western Alaska-
For Western Alaska, correct.
Yeah, and so anyway, and I understand and I respect what you're trying to do. And the essence of my question is, are there people in town who also would be, if not better, require to be served? You know, our local food bank, what have you?
Oh, I don't disagree with you, I believe that, you know, our residents, this community, are a top priority.
I, I agree, thank you. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the resolution, I'm just want to make sure that those who live on this side of the mountain, who may be in need, are also addressed and certainly not precluded from any assistance.
Well, yes, of course, I gave a shout out earlier to Chief, the Fire Department Chief, Kate, in particular. He has made significant efforts to bring assistance to our residents. And that's, that's in the fire and EMS report.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Wagner?
It's not a question, it's a statement, I just want to double down on what you just said, that the Fire Department and the community as a whole has done a great job at supporting everybody. I, I know this is kind of convoluted, that this money is supposed to be for our locals, but it's also our locals that are out there trying to raise this money, so I can connect the dots there. But yeah, I don't think anybody here is going to miss out because of the $700 match, so I, I'm ready to vote, so.
Mayor? Just for funding purposes, I do think it's good to just clearly state you're supporting your high school students in a matching program, and that's the community support that you're all expressing, just for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Okay, seeing no further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Holly, will you stop me if this motion is not worded the way that you were recommending? The motion is to match the Whittier Community Schools $700- The motion is to match the Whittier Community Schools $700 contribution to the Western Alaska relief efforts from the Community Support Fund. Okay. Voting on that motion, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and the council has decided to match the Whittier Community Schools $700 contribution.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Other council comments? Okay, hearing none. What's, citizen discussion? Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up? Time is limited to five minutes per speaker on any subject matter over which the commission has control. Again, this is not a time for dialogue, rather, it is a time to allow citizens to speak and the council to listen. Yep, please come forth. You can press that button, please state your name. Thank you.
Great, good evening. Kai Holland, House District Nine Representative from the Legislature. Thank you for a couple of minutes of time tonight. I want to touch on a couple of things since the last meeting. One is just to let you know that our office had provided a letter to you regarding the FLAP funding for the Shotgun Cove Road Extension. So that was supporting a grant application that we were able to provide in there, and I appreciate folks reaching out to the office to give us an opportunity to participate and support that program. Also, to acknowledge that I was asked to start looking into some more of the communication challenges in the Portage Valley area that are affecting your EMS and the police activities in that valley that are creating some communication gaps for service response. So I followed up on that, both with the Whittier Fire Station, and I met today with the Commissioner of Public Safety and addressed the issue as one that we'll continue to work on. So looking both at the issue of the cell coverage along the road, as well as some of the emergency radio equipment that you need to be able to have better access during an emergency and response incident in there. So if you have more information on that, let me know. This kind of connects up to the CAPSIS-related activities that we do each year. I'll continue to look for some information. If you can help me with renewing the application for the ambulance that we put in last year, that was our top-rated request from this district through Senator Geisel, and I want to continue to keep that as a high priority, as well as the extraction equipment that was proposed as another possible area of need, and this communication equipment is another piece of that puzzle. So we'll have a tough budget year, but I continue to want to advocate for the important role that your police and emergency response personnel are providing, both to this local community, to Girdwood under the contract, but also how essential you are to the public highway that connects this area and the role that Whittier plays in stepping into that gap in servicing and responding quickly to people that are in need of support. I do want to note and congratulate you also on the progress being made on the railroad. It's exciting to see this. You know, I've been coming to your meetings now for over a year, watching this issue develop, and you made a big step today, and I'm pleased to see that. I would ask that we follow up with some opportunity to look at the original legislation that was drafted under what was the planned approach to this land at the time, transfer, and now I think it's cleaned up to more of a sale. But I'm also open to some creativity in what we might do with that. So do let me know. This is, of course, the middle of November. I would like, if we can, to get the legislative legal request in soon, in the next few weeks, if it's possible, only because we've got this legislation already at the front of the queue for the House Transportation Committee, because we were trying to get it heard right before the end of the session this past spring, but ran out of time. So it's right at the front of the line. If we can keep it moving, it would mean trying to get this legislation updated so that it's ready to go in the middle of January, given the holidays. Like I said, next couple of weeks, it'd be nice to work out what you'd like to see in that language and the change, so I can get it in, start that process, so that by the time we get to the middle of January, we really are ready to bring that straight back into the committee where it's ready to go fairly quickly. But anyway, your advice and support on what you'd like to see done, how and when, just let me know. I'm here to just kind of facilitate the process for you. But now that you've made some decisions today to move ahead, I want to be supportive of keeping it moving ahead on our end. Just a reminder, there was a discussion at the last meeting about the possibility of Alaska Standard Time support. I will just leave it at that in case you continue to want to look into that issue at a future meeting. The last thing for tonight is just to let you know I'll be back on Friday. I'm going to spend most of the day here with the staff. We've got an 8:45 breakfast at the school we've been invited to. We'll be over at the ferry terminal for a tour, and then we're doing a coffee for everyone who can stop by from two to three over in the lounge in the BTI building. So I've got a couple flyers out on the table out there, and would encourage all of you, if you get a chance, to stop by for a couple of minutes. Or by all means, we will be in town and available after that breakfast at the school. So if you want to sit down and meet about railroad issues or any of these other issues, I'll be here all day and probably not head back until probably four or five. So if anybody would like to spend a few minutes and chat, just reach out to me. I've got some flyers out on the table, have my phone number, if you want to reach out to me to try and arrange some time on that. And other than that, thank you for a couple of minutes of your time, and I wish you well. See you again on Friday. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, I almost forget this. I've got a newsletter that comes out most every week. There's a QR code on here, or you can just send an email to our office if you want to get added to the email list. Make sure you're getting those updates from us. Yes, sir.
Oh, Ms. Wild would like to respond if you're completely done.
So, Mr. Holland, if you'd like, we'll make sure that your announcement for Friday is on our social media, but myself and our contractor are already planning on scheduling a meeting with you, so we'll get in touch with you probably within the next week.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Okay, thank you.
No one else has signed in, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience who have comments? Please come up to the podium, remember, turn it on, and please state your name. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Ross Carlson, and I'll just get straight to the point. There are two sets of rules here in Whittier. There's rules that most everyone's expected to follow and do. Don't park here, park here, put your trailer here, so on and so forth. And there's a second set of rules. So if council could take the time and just kind of write out so we all know that, hey, if you're here for a year, these are the rules that you gotta abide by. If you're here for two years, these are the ones you gotta abide by, you know, three, four, five, six, seven. Like, how long does one have to actually live here in Whittier or have a connection to it before you just don't have to follow the rules? It gets, it gets really irritating when everyone's expected to follow rules, except they only apply to certain people. So that's all I got to say about that.
Okay. Are there any other citizen comments?
Mayor, if I can ask that we remove the first executive session before you go into it, so just already out of there. And then I'm also going to request that you move your policing contract up, and you can do my city manager performance afterwards. That way, if there's anything legal that needs to be discussed with the police contract, your legal would be here.
Okay.
And possibly a five-minute break.
Of course. Any council administrative response to citizen comments? Okay, hearing none. Can we, you want to move into the executive session first, and then do a break? Okay. All right. Is there a motion and second to enter into executive session to discuss the Alaska Railroad Corporation land?
No, no, we're not doing that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. That's, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to go into an executive session.
No, thank you.
I will second.
Voting on the motion to enter into executive session to discuss the Girdwood policing contract matters if that, if immediately disclosed, which tend to adversely affect the finances of the city, Whittier Municipal Code 2.08.04OB1. And city manager performance matters that would tend to injure the reputation of a person, provided, however, that the person may request a public discussion, Whittier Municipal Code 2.08.04OB2. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark? Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes, and... There's a break time. Hold on. At 8:55 PM, who did you want in each executive session?
Okay, I think we need, we need Ms. Wells, correct? Ms. Wells? Ms. Wild?
Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea? I think that's, any other recommendations there?
Jackie? Jackie? Do you want Chris on the Girdwood? No, on the Girdwood policing contract?
Ms. Wells, got it. We have them.
Okay. Did you want Finance?
Yes.
Okay, yes, those people too, please.
And then for the performance review, just Ms. Wild, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a break for 10 minutes. Let's take a break for ten minutes.
Mrs. Lone made a motion and Mrs. Borg seconded the motion to exit executive session. Voting on the motion to exit executive session, Mrs. Lone?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark? How do you vote on exiting executive session?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and council exits executive session at 11:01 PM.
We have some motions on the-
Yes. So is there a motion in a second to direct administration to bring forward a resolution to consider approval of the Gerdwood Police Services contract?
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Appley. Voting on the motion to direct administration to bring forward a resolution to consider approval of the Gerdwood Police Services contract, Mrs. Borg.
Yes.
Mrs. Lone?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and administration is so directed. The second motion we have is to direct administration to bring forward a resolution to consider approval of the city manager employment agreement changes. Is there a motion in a second?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Voting on the motion to direct administration to bring forward a resolution to consider approval of the city manager employment agreement changes, Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mrs. Lone?
Yes.
Mrs. Borg?
Yes.
Mayor Shen?
Yes.
The motion passes and administration is so directed.
Seeing no further business, adjourn this meeting at 11:03.